So the way the furlough program is going to work, we know more now than we do when we met with CSU EU. But basically for APC, the nature of the deal is that beginning in August, everyone has to take two days a month throughout the academic year. And your paychecks will be reduced by approximately nine and a half percent thereabouts, beginning with the check that we will receive around the first of September. It's kind of the way I would icon call it September check, but it's really August check. It's for the time that we work in August, but for me, I kind of think of it as a September check. So the next check we get, all unless you're going to see your pay go down by approximately 9.3%, or something to that effect. Associated with it, we are required to reduce our time by two days a month. And the way we're going to do that in August, it is that we're going to do two months at pretty much your discretion. It will be necessary for you and your appropriate administrators to get together, to figure out which two days you're going to take in August. And there are some rules about that. You can only take one week, one day per week. You can't take two in any one week. Say if you pick one in the next couple of weeks that we have each week, two days during the month of August. We're asking if it's possible, and they may not work. If it's conceivably possible to try to avoid the first two weeks of the month because, I'm sorry, to avoid the last two weeks of August because that's the time when we're opening the school year. And there are many students that are arriving, and it would be very helpful if most of us could be here on those last two weeks of August. That may not be possible, everyone understands that. And already done, but the first week of August is a little difficult. But that's how it would work in the month of August. When we get to September, the same thing will happen. Everyone has to take two days in September that we'd like to take, pretty much at your discretion, with the appropriate administrators signing off on that. And again, only one per week, you can't take two in a particular week. Same thing will happen in October, no big deal, same issue, works in October. Change a little bit in November. When we get to November, we're going to do our first campus closure. So the campus will be closed the day after Thanksgiving. This is not really earth-shattering for most of us. We have been closed the day after Thanksgiving for every year that I've been here for many, many years. So that will not be unusual, but in days gone by, we used to take that as a personal holiday or vacation. This year, you don't have to do that because we'll be closed and we'll count some of the furlough days. So in November, you have to just pick one day that you will take, but you cannot take it during the Thanksgiving week. Some people are thinking of taking it the Monday after Thanksgiving because that gives you kind of a long weekend. So that might be a possibility for some folks. Others will take it some other time in November at your discretion. So that's kind of the way it will work in the month of November. So just have to pick one for that month. As it relates to December, you don't have to worry about December. December, the campus is going to be closed on New Year's Eve, that'll be December 31, and Christmas Eve, December 24. We always have been planning to be closed from December 31. We were all going to move a vacation day or some other kind of holiday there to make that up for what we call a holiday closure. That will be necessary now because we'll be having a furlough day on 31 December. 24 December is a non-vacation day, and we'll close the campus on that day as well. It's possible, and we're all hopeful, that the governor, as he has traditionally done, it will happen this year, but in days gone by, he has given us the half-day off on the day before Christmas and Christmas Eve. If that happens, you'll wonder what will happen for that day if we won't be here. It will roll forward, we'll only get four extra hours that we will be able to use on an informal basis, sometime between January 1st and then, of course, June 30th. So you won't lose the four hours if we get the holiday time off that sometimes the government gives. When we come out to January, you don't have to worry about that either because January, we're going to have campus closure days, and I believe they are January 8th and January 22nd. So the campus will literally be closed on those days. And when I say closed, the only things that will be open at the institution on what we call a campus closure day will be the police department and dispatchers, and they are exempt from the furlough. As well, it will probably have a building service engineer here to manage our local plant and the related facilities of that nature. And that's the only folks that will be open. All the other offices will be closed, all the other facilities will be closed, including the library, the rec. etc., and so forth and so on. I'm going to come back in and talk a little bit about residents' life in a minute. Today has some unique issues, but let's come back to the end and talk about the RSCs and what might happen there. So 8th and 22nd, you don't have to worry about it, we're just going to close on those days. There's a beautiful campus closure. We have just now received permission, not just now, but a day or two ago, from the chancellor's office to proceed through the rest of the spring semester with closures of the campus in this regard. So in the months of February, March, April, May, and June, we will have mandatory closures in each of those months. So once again, you don't have to pick because we will all be told when we're going to work on those days. I think it's probably on the frequently asked question sheet what days they are so you can see what days will be closed. The one caveat I'll point out is that months of April will be closed this spring break week, at least Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then people might want to take their personal holiday on that day as well. Either it will be gone because there's one day during the spring break that we will be open. I think it's the Monday.
No, we made it the Friday.
The Friday, right, so it's the Friday. So some folks may want to take that to give them a long leave there. But there is a little caveat that we've probably heard you talk about before on the other forums. It's sort of contradictory to what I was saying before that you can only take one furlough day in a week. In one 52-week period, you're allowed to take as much as four furlough days in a week. It has to do with the unemployment compensation laws, that once in a 52-week period, you can be off in a furlough position for four days or less. And so the C issues allow us to move to that situation in one spring 52-week period. And our campus is picking the spring break week. And what we're really doing here is pointing at two days that we normally do in April, as well as the two days that we should have taken in July, which we could not have written together and put it in April, and picking the spring break to do. So that's the scheme for the spring. And that's resting upon the fact that the academic senate is in discussions with the academic leadership about modifying the course schedule for the spring term. And that would be the case if there would be no classes taught on Friday. And that makes it possible for us to do a closure on those Fridays that are listed on the sheet. Then we come to June, and the faculty are forced to go on, and we'll do the closure in June. That will not have an impact. So for those periods when we have formal campus closures, there's nothing that you need to do. But for the periods where you have to make a choice, so that would be August, September, October, and one day in November, you have to get together with your appropriate administrator and figure out which days you want to take. And pretty soon, if she hasn't done so already, Susan is going to send a note through email to the appropriate administrators in the room saying, "It's now time for you to sit down with your people and fill out these forms about what days you're going to take." And they have to get turned in pretty quickly. There will be a deadline that Susan will give us all when they come out. So that will be underway probably in the next few or so months before. So you would be wanting to be thinking about that. And for the appropriate administrators in the room, you're going to want to move on that in an expeditious fashion. And one of the things that we would like to emphasize is that, or Dr. Armia would like to emphasize to the management team, is that to the degree that you can maintain flexibility to accommodate the specific personal needs of the employees, that's a good thing. Of course, we have to keep a place for any of the live-search students. And since APC tends to be very intimately connected with students, I don't mean to say this to you folks, but we're trying to really balance, so we often do balance, your personal needs and how that can work with the furloughing with the needs of the student body. So I'm asking the managers on behalf of the president to be flexible and understanding. And also to recognize that it is very likely, probably will happen, that it will be necessary to change the furlough plan from time to time. What you think you're going to do in November today might be a little different because something might come up in your life, or a complicated situation that will come to pass. And so once again, I'm going to ask the administrator on behalf of our president to be flexible with all the folks that are being impacted by this particular situation. The other thing that I always would like to point out, and I've been trying to point out at all the settings where we talk about this, is that when you go down 24 days a year, if about 10% of the work's gone, life cannot be the same. At least it will not be possible for us to do what we always do because it can happen when you're gone that much. I want to furlough tomorrow, I'm starting my day trying to get everything done so that I can finish before I commit tomorrow. And that gets very difficult. So you're going to find that, and that means that you're not going to be able to do what you normally do. And the managers in the room, that's going to probably take them off because they have to get some delivery, and it might frustrate you because you have to get things done. So I think I'm asking the managers to be understanding, this is not a work speedup or more on furlough. You can't work beyond the time, we're working 32 hours a week, that's it. And we just need to understand that we're not going to be able to accomplish what we would normally accomplish in a 40-hour week, it's just not doable. So everyone needs to understand that. And if any person in APC feel that there's a work speedup going on, or some type of issue like that, I would like a person to know that, and that I will do my best to entertain and make certain that we don't exploit the people that work with us. So I know this can be tricky, but it is the case that we are to work only 32 hours during those weeks while working furlough. A special note to those of you who are exempt. During the 30, I'm not one of those people. During the exempt week, or during the week that you're furloughed, you become non-exempt. So you may only work 32 hours in that week. And one of the things that Susan and Pedro are going to be asking you to certify is that you did not work more than 32 hours in that week. Because if you do work more than 32 hours in that week, under the law, we're going to have to pay you for that. It's a no-one's advantage to do that because Jan isn't here, but our budget offices actually then come into your budget accounts and remove the value of the furlough because we have to give that money back to help with the budget reduction. So if you work more than 32 hours, your department's going to have to pay you. But they don't have the money to pay you, which is going to hurt them. So that's the word for managers. So it's very important that you try to hit 32 and certainly not go over. And if you do go under it in that particular week, you have to use vacation or stick or some other kind of option. So for the furlough weeks, you want to really stick with the 32 hours. Folks, this week you worked during the week, know that I'm going around telling everyone to get out of here. It's 4:30, you better go home, and I won't go, and it's a dilemma. And we really, really need to make certain, and it is difficult as it sometimes can be, that we are disciplined during the furlough weeks. That's one of the values of the campus closure, you might be liking campus closures even though it takes away some flexibility. When the whole school is closed, it's pretty easy, you just don't come. No one's here, so work doesn't build up because no one's here to generate. So that's kind of the value of doing a campus closure. And I was particularly opposed to CSU EU. Other, we prefer the flexibility because it is kind of nice to be able to pick three days when we can. But we're going with this schedule as it is. Couple other things, not related to the furlough, but it's something that we're studying. And that is, once we get through our two furlough days in June, I'll notice that the furlough days in June are the first two weeks in June, as opposed to being spread out. And the reason for that is that we're seriously considering, and if we do do this, we'll give proper notice to all the collective bargaining agreement units, of closing the campus on Fridays in June, I'm sorry, in the summer. We did that some years ago, we went to a 4-10 schedule. Some of you were here in the day, we'll remember that, and then CSU campus security. We worked four days, 10 hours, and then closed on Friday. And the reason we're seriously looking at that possibility is that it will create significant savings in utilities, along with the 24-day furlough days and the summer closure, aside from the furlough, we could save almost $200,000 by doing that. But we haven't completely worked through that issue yet. We need to have some more conversation about whether that's going to actually take place. So stay tuned to that. But I wanted to give a heads up that for the summer, we may be going to a 4-10 schedule starting the third week of June, or we do, or the third week in August, something like that. But we'll do the proper audits and so forth and so on. Some people really love that simple years, you know, we did it. Some people really didn't like it too much. So it all depends on your own perspective. Worried about grants people? Do you imagine that? All of Matt's spokespeople that work in USPS are funded pretty much by a grant, a federal grant or a state grant, they are exempt from the furlough. So they will not be having their pay reduced, they will not be furloughed. And I'm not sure we've quite figured out what we're going to do with the USPS folks on the days that were closed. I imagine we'll probably have to adjust work schedules to accommodate the work in the four days of those closure weeks, Matt, and folks who work in USPS, so that you don't get to come to work on the days that were closed. Because our goal is to shut the campus down on those days to save utilities. That's an important thing. But if you are funded by a grant, you are not affected by the furlough. Our RSCs, I'm worried about them because they live in. As you know, they are pretty much seven by 24 people. I don't know how they can ever not be on. My first shout-out ever entirely was as one of those people in RSC, and I know how it is. You are not, if not looking at your door, learning student talks, or CSA, or something like that. I don't quite know how it's possible to furlough in RSC.
I actually wanted to ask, discuss that to you.
Okay, so I, we're asking the chancellor's office for clarification on this. The party answer that we received is not the one that I would like personally to receive. And so next week, I'll be in Long Beach and plan to kick that up some more. I just don't quite conceive how it's going to be possible for the RSCs to shut their door to a young man who is there, or CSA, who needs to talk to them. And then I can take them off furloughs, and they're going to pay them, so it's confusing to me. So I'm advocating that the RSCs be exempt along with my police. But I don't know if that's going to be true. If it's not true, we're going to have to sit down with Chuck and Cindy, Mo and others who work in RSC, like, to figure out how this can be. By having done that job, I do not know how it can be. And as most of us know, CSU is an institution, system-wise, is not a terribly residential university system. Most of the campuses are not nearly as residential as we are, so it's more purely built here. So hopefully I'll have more direction on that question when I get back from L.A. next week. But at the moment, they're saying they're going to furloughize. Can't quite figure out the guidance to give them how to furloughize. Don't quite know how we're going to handle that, but you have a question.
Well, I want to see if we can work something out that perhaps you can take back to the chancellor. I do know that our union worked very, very hard with the CSU to try to get the RSCs exempt. A lot of the RSC people for the campuses are the standard 24/7, so we wish you better luck.
Yeah.
But in reading the agreement, they're defining furlough as eight hours. So I understand that the chancellor's office and the CSU want to furlough the RSCs. It would, I understand, also be a scheduling nightmare in RSC. But if the chancellor's office chooses not to, then I think there is a way that it could work because we're not asking the RSCs to take an entire day. Because we know their day isn't normal. So like I said, it would be a scheduling nightmare to do eight hours, you know, two days a month. But that's what they originally said. So if there's some way, perhaps if the chancellor still wants to go through with this, that that would be the discussion, you know, who's going to take this eight-hour period for this RLC and transfer that responsibility to another RLC. Obviously, our position is we would like to have it be exempt because it's just such an incredibly responsible position for, you know, hundreds and hundreds of students that it would just be ludicrous, I think, to try to maintain that. But I don't know if that helps any. I know you guys are studying this agreement as hard as we have. But if we, I think if we can stick to the definition of how they define a furlough as eight hours, that might help alleviate some of the partake agreements.
Yeah, I agree. I'm hopeful we're going to get them again, but that's my goal. But if that doesn't happen, then probably we'll get together with APC leadership, and maybe the RSCs aren't admitting them, that's a good reason, a small campus. And we'll hammer out some of the local folks that they feel good about, we feel that we can live with because invited and the rules are very large. So I think that would be the strategy that I would propose that we do because, you know, our RSCs are great group, and I don't think we're going to have, we'll come to some way, but it would be better for each season.
Absolutely.
But as we've heard recently, that's still not in the cards. Yes?
I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that when we're taking the four days off in April, we're not, our salary isn't being reduced to four days, or it's actually already spread out to cover the two days from July and the total year's work.
That is correct, thank you for bringing that out.
Do you have a question, please?
Yeah, yeah, sure. The question is, when we get to April, we're going to take four days off. Will your check go down by a double what it would have gone in two days? And the answer is no. Their applying is a uniform salary reduction each month, starting with the check that they'll receive next. So the paycheck will be reduced in a uniform amount in each of the next 11 months. So even though we're going to work four days less in April, the paycheck will reflect the fact that we work two days less. But we did, but we're making out for July. People have?
Yeah, I have one. There's a couple of things that have come to light in the recent week or so about how this furlough budget is starting to impact different offices that Unit 4 members are part of. And I appreciate you speaking to the managers about if, you know, in 32 hours, you can't get all the work done. So I would just like to put it out there that something else that you can make back to me is that there are, there is some verging being used around performance evaluations in, including, you know, having a positive morale during the budget crisis and kind of trying to make that a goal in the evaluations for this past year and for next year. So I'm wondering, contractually, and I don't think you can do that. And so, but the other piece of that is, there was discussion with some members about rescinding their vacation that had already been approved because of the lack of work that got them to do furlough. So I don't know if you're aware of that, but there are managers that manage Unit 4 members that are making statements like that. So I would encourage all of us to remember that there are certain things that even though we're furloughed, we can't do contractually. So I think it's, I think it's fair to say that we all suffer. And the students and their families are going to suffer more than we are because we can't get the work done. And I don't want Unit 4 members in the weeks that they're exempt to feel like they have to work 60 hours that week. I don't want them to have to come in after they've worked a 40-hour week to do a full day Saturday or half a day Sunday. I think at that point, we become, you know, we start taking advantage of the kindness that we as students, service professionals, just are normally have. You know, we want to do the best in the best interest of the students. But I, I don't want this to become a situation where managers may feel the need out of their own sense of pressure to put that onto our Unit 4 employees to go above and beyond what we do already, you know, so.
Well, yeah, I think, I'll echo your comments. I think that it is the intent of the president of our university that employees are not to be placed in a situation where they feel the need to work more hours on the week that they are not furloughed in the responsive weeks that they were, so that just can't be. So I have to stress that to all the appropriate administrators in the room, you have to be real sensitive, do that back, not only for the ABC employees, but for yourself as well. There are many managers, or all the ABCs are being furloughed, and they're confidential, and they have the same issue. And I can tell you, it's a little bit of a, it's an interesting moral dilemma that you face. And I should be personally, based on today, I don't quite know what to do, I'm supposed to go, but I can, because I finished this, and I feel stressed, I'm here, and feel stressed. It's a peculiar situation, and I think we're going to have to work through that. But it's very, very important that managers do not overwork their people during the week. As it relates to vacations, many people plan their vacations months and months in advance. And I would again ask the managers to be sensitive to that question. It may come from time to time because of a peculiar situation that has been imposed upon us by this most unusual financial crisis, that it might be necessary to ask a manager's employee to change their vacation if they can. Things like this will come up, it happens in any human experience. But their time coming is, and I would really encourage all of us to make a choice to do that. Yes?
I'm sorry, you said something about evaluations that I just missed.
Yeah, the evaluation, I hadn't heard that, that folks are wanting, maybe it's part of the performance evaluation.
It came to my attention that a manager who oversees Unit 4 has put a goal for the fall of the year in the evaluations that they have a positive morale during this time.
Oh, I'll speak to that, because that's my group. And I have not heard from individuals in my group a misunderstanding of what that goal represents. My viewpoint with this, and part of the APC evaluation has opportunity for goals for the upcoming period, which we have oftentimes had specific areas where we're trying to improve how we work as individual goals and group goals. I don't want us to feel like we're in a situation where we have to do something extra to meet this goal. We're in a year where we have to keep our operation running with less resources than we normally do. So the statement of the goal is just recognizing the shared goal to maintain effectiveness and positive morale given the challenges that we're faced with with the budget situation. So I would not like to see this perceived as something that's intended to force people to keep a smile on their face, but more to acknowledge that we're in a difficult situation. And by working together towards a common positive goal, we are much more likely to get through this in a way that works for everybody and works for our students.
But there's a punitive factor to that on an evaluation if you see that they're not doing that? And that's kind of the big end result that I hear.
Well, if the team, if the team fails to meet the goal, then they will come in. Problems experienced by our students, problems experienced by the other offices that depend on the work that the financial director says. So I can't quite put myself in that thought of down the road when the evaluation is being done for 910. I just can't quite go there.
And I will step in. We're friends, whether we're furloughed or not, we are public servants. We work for the people of California, and it is appropriate for us to behave in a positive fashion for the people that we work with, whether we're furloughed or not. That is something that should stand without question. So I agree, Susan, with your, your statement, that that makes sense. Without, whether it's furloughed or not, that's, that's your goal.
Sorry, as a fellow administrator, I think the main issue is the work morale. I mean, asking people to go be professional in their workplace and, you know, providing a positive, you know, in their special medical service desk where they have to, you know, have a public customer service is sort of different than asking people to, it's like you're kind of asking them to do something how great morale when that's something that's too, a little too furlough. I don't know how to express it, but that's a little too, people can do whatever they need to do, and maybe they feel, they don't feel so great about it, but they'll do it because they're a public servant and they need to do that, but to sort of force them to be happy about it, or.
That's not what you're doing, right? Because that might be an interpretation of that.
That's what I'm, I'm worried there is kind of.
I do think it creates a new managerial challenge for every manager to try to continue to be motivational and inspiring and display leadership in a very tricky time. These are uncharted territories for all of us who are in the management of the land as well. It is difficult, it is difficult. But you always want to try to instill positive morale, like it would take us, some managerial tasks to do, and it makes it even more challenging perhaps in this climate.
Well, perhaps I can, can we chat afterwards?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes?
I'm part of this office, and it could be an interpretation thing, but I didn't take it that way at all, since that's part of my evaluation when we went through that process. I sort of thought of it as. I sort of thought of it as an encouragement, you know, let's try to, you know, keep together. I didn't take it that way at all.
Yes?
I have a question about the thirty-two-hour week when those of us who are normally exempt or non-exempt.
Uh-huh.
Is the week being measured so that... Let's say I take a little bit for a doctor's appointment on Tuesday. Can I work nine hours on Wednesday so I can furlough the thirty-two and at least get that much time to get my work done?
You can. The work, as I understand it, begins on Sunday and ends on Saturday. Most of us do that Monday through Friday, but that could be the case. If you work overtime one week, one day, like ten hours for some reason, then you might have to go home on Thursday free rather than the Friday. I guess you may.
That just confused me. I thought that she would be taking sick leave.
Either. I mean, we have...
She can make it up the next day.
With their... You know, you work with your appropriate administrator, and if you can adjust your schedule to meet thirty-two hours during your furlough week, that's, you know, that's acceptable. Or if you... Or you can fill in that time with sick or vacation time.
So just to run that out a little. I'm a non-exempt employee. So when I have dental appointment, I take sick leave. I'm not technically allowed to come in the next day and make up the difference in the hours from my dental appointment. So is that a different understanding for exempt folks who are then becoming non-exempt?
It's always up to... Between the employee and the appropriate administrator, depending on the operational needs. Some places can allow more flexibility with allowing employees to either come in early or stay late. Some places can't. So, you know, it really is, I think, on a case-by-case basis, you work with your appropriate administrator, and if they can adjust... If they allow you to adjust your schedule during that week, that's acceptable.
I'm worried about layoffs. We haven't talked about layoffs. I'd like to comment on that. If you came last week to the town hall without a budget, you don't know, in addition to the issues related to the furlough is the way that the budget reduction... The university is going to be substantially reducing its enrollment during this nine, ten year. Five thousand three hundred eighty students, the precise number is three hundred seventy-eight students. It will reduce. When you do that, you lose money. It translates into about $12 million of expenses that we have to reduce beyond furlough expense. And since so much of our money is tied up inside of people, you may worry, will there be layoffs in addition to furlough? It's not prescribed within the APC agreement, I understand it, but on our campus, you will not engage in layoff practices or even discuss a layoff for APC during the fall semester. That's the same commitment as they made to the CSU-EU organization, to the MPP group, the confidential group. This university will not be engaging in discussions in any way about layoffs of any employees during the fall semester. Spring is a different question, but we'll be able to spring it as we get into the spring. But at the moment, I would want to reassure everyone, if that's on your mind, that it might be worrying you, that that should not worry you at this point. I have to say, however, having looked at the budget reduction plans that the vice presidents have shared with me, that it is likely that positions become vacant for normal attrition or retirement. It could very well be the case that they might not be filled because the reductions are significant, both in the nine, ten year and the ten, eleven year. So I would say that won't be true. But in terms of layoffs, that is something to be on the table at the moment. Any other questions that have come up?
I just want to really... I want to thank very much for pulling the administrators into this discussion. It's so helpful when we're looking at the big picture, including everybody at all levels. And I really want to encourage the members of APC to keep communication open with us and with Larry, as he encouraged us to do. We're going to be able to get siloed on this really easily, and there are going to be misinterpretations and distress. I furloughed this week. I'm already stressed. I have so many phone calls to make and emails to respond to. So if we can just really... What does the Congress reach for the Better Angels or something, and all of us and just be talking amongst all these different levels? That would be so helpful and would make it through. Thank you.
It's a good point. We are having... We have something called the LNC Labor Management Committee, which has always existed, but not always as more formal as we're going to try and work hard this year to do. So there is a structure that the university, HR team, these folks, and the leadership of the collective bargaining units will be involved in trying to mitigate these issues. So I want to stress that. The other thing we did talk about, we have one bargaining unit inside of APC, but it is something you should be aware of, it's an SEPC. These are our trade personnel. They have not agreed to furlough. And we don't quite know what's going to happen in that realm just yet because we ought to require to reduce the equivalent value of the furlough had they furloughed from the SEPC employees through some sort of employment action. That particular bargaining unit is still in the midst of the... They have a full contract to be opening, and we don't know where that's going to end. So our campus, if they give their heads up, is... The criticism is, it's supposed to never, I don't know, are waiting to see how that process is going to play out before we take a particular action with respect to SEPC. But that doesn't really affect APC, but sometimes that question comes up. Other questions that I can try and offer? Yes?
Will there be additional, like, communication going out to, you know, community and to students and things like that? Because, you know, already, students are going to be feeling the pressure of, you know, increased fees and reduced classes and now reduced services and things like that. And it efforts to hopefully alleviate them, like, taking it out on, you know, an individual or person because they're not there, you know, when they really need them or want them. Because it almost kind of can tie back to the evaluation thing where, you know, a person is being there on furlough. They can't be there for that student if the student complains. You know, and then all of a sudden, there's a reflection, now a negative reflection on an individual. So I just wasn't sure if we could just at least kind of reiterate that, you know, we're all looking the best we can and hopefully to work together instead of, you know, making the bad situation worse.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Both Dan Hondon and Susan Kasek are here. They're our experts of communication, and I do think it's something we might have to follow up on to help particularly the campus students understand that the people that they rely on or support may not always be available to them. Here's why. And frankly, the faculty might need to understand that sometimes it's that who are so important to their work aren't going to be here on the day because they might want to be here, and that might pick them off. And that's just the reality of it. Their furloughing system is a little bit different than the non-private side. And I think we need to impress upon those folks that it's not business as usual. I can stress it strongly enough. We are, as a university community, able to say to people of California, we can get by without 10% of our locations that we're... That just cannot be. So we will... Something is not going to happen. There will be mistakes made. Some financial agent gets screwed up. Aver will not run as smoothly as it should. These are things that are going to happen. I don't... I mean, I will make that happen, but there will be some crashing in mind. It's inevitable, right? I don't understand, and I don't think we should try to make that happen, but I... I... Maybe... But I do think we need to help our students understand that, oh, you know, I just couldn't get to you right that day because of, wow, I had to say to a professor today, I can't do this with you today because I'm furloughing second, and I can't meet it. That's just the way it is. I don't know what to say. So I think it's a great idea. And Dan and Susan and I will discuss about how we might figure out the best ways to communicate with students. Either through email or ads in the star or other ways to help folks understand that employees are here to serve. They are placed in a very awkward situation, both contradicting their fundamental desire to be of service, but they're also losing money, and it's a very... Sometimes it's difficult. It's very...
Okay, Dan, can you also, like, just put in email? Because with us, you know, 80% of our organization is with parents. Maybe something like we're on the website or somewhere because, you know, that's the move we deal with. The move we have, we have to choose, is with parents. So they usually don't get the email that we sent to the students, so...
Yeah, that's a good point.
We have... We have something on the... One of them is called... But all sorts of situations will happen. We should write parents better. And there's also something that Melinda Barnum created, sort of FAQ for students. This topic, of students who've got their parents. You know, learn about registration. So we're trying to do things available through email. We're putting them in our town hall site. I think videos are available. They're right now. They're all there. People want to listen to them. And we're sending emails as often as we can. But I think the most important place, especially for parents, is our homepage, and we're putting updated information.
Yes?
I want to point out that, you know, even though we work these hours, some parents are just... They start to study. They just don't care. Just wanted to grab a vacation. My first rule is Friday, it's last Friday, and I apparently have a very snarly voice mail about not being there on demand. And I didn't really feel sympathy, even the national service indicator. They've already come to the party extremely late. And even just to demand same-day service, you know, despite their lack of, you know, quality, it's not happening. Some people are just going to be upset. They're not secure. So you take it with a grain of salt, you know? Hey, you're late. Yeah, it's your problem. I'm not here, but I'll get it done. And the order that was received, when I get back. So it takes karma. She ended up helping the guy call back on the instant touch to a person. So some people, regardless of the information, are just going to be unhappy. They're not going to have any means of satisfying. It's got a little bit, right? Let it roll off. Try to look forward and stay calm.
It's a good approach. I think one of the things that will help us all through this period is we're all going to encounter these kinds of things, that we have to try to be there for each other and to support each other. Carmen, you should... But just to keep our own sense of sanity as people scream at us and yell at us and get angry as they understand they will. And from many perspectives, you can understand why they're frustrated. We probably are frustrated. I have to bring in my license. I can't go to DMV because they're closed. So I have to keep in mind, I shouldn't be mad at the DMV people because it's not really their fault either. But it's smart, and we're all going to have to try to work through those issues. Yeah.
President Arminia answered the CSU-EU needing to refer them to their legislator and governor. You can always do that. I mean, it doesn't help us if you scream. You can all say that this is out of our control, you know?
It was the question... The question is, one of the... What's another crucial observation when we were meeting with the CSU-EU folks? The question came, what do we tell the parent or the student or whoever, the vendor, whoever we're talking to, that they're screaming at us? How should this be? What... Who do they... Who do we refer them to? And Dr. Mariano recommended that if that happened, we should refer them to the governor and the appropriate elected official. And I think, I don't know if we can put out those situations or where they are.
Which you just tricked.
Why not?
I'm sorry, Susan?
Just this morning, we closed on the homepage. Something says, "Your legislator." If you click on it, it has all the legislators on it.
So I think that's in response... Dr. Mariano believes that's where the responsibility lies. And it's not your fault. You're doing amazing things. We're saving $6 million by this furlough. It's a lot of money compared to my check. For many of you, it's going to be harder when it ends to me. Month to month, it's very difficult. So everyone has to be aware that there's a very, very major contribution being made by both the employees of the university and the students. The students are coming in with another $5 million of D increase. And between those two things and enrollment reduction we're able to manage through this year. But you cannot underestimate $6 million. It's a lot of money. The employees, doctors, staffs, administrators are all coming forward out of their check. It's tough times. A lot of people are really living in a difficult situation. You might have family members are out of work or whatnot. It's very difficult. So I don't think people should underestimate the very substantial contribution that every employee of this institution is making. The good news, it's not affecting the healthcare. So that's a good thing. The healthcare benefit, that's a great thing. If there's any silver lining, that's good. It's not screwing up the retirement. So that's a good thing. It's not affecting your base salary. That's a good thing. But you are losing 10% of your check. So the way I did, I looked at my take home pay last night, and I figured out how much 10% net will be, and I'm going to have to figure out a way that my wife and I can get along without that. I'm in a different income bracket, so in some ways it's a little easier, but I'm very concerned personally about folks that are in lower incomes, that are living paycheck to paycheck. That's a very substantial reduction in their salary. And on very, very good terms, it will be a one-year deal only. And that's what we're told. That's what we're being told, this is a one-year understanding. But I have to tell you, it's an eleven-year. It's not looking good financially. It's looking really, really crappy. And we'll just have to take it. Dr. Mariano, we had a retreat last week with President Kavanaugh. He's taken one-year time. It's really almost one-monthly time is the better way to look at it. It's a better answer. So one of the things that we want to do at CSU is communicate, make sure as much knowledge as we can. We'll probably do a lot of town halls. Like I mentioned, we'll do one a month on budget issues as the information unfolds. Thinking of ways I could confer with the HR folks and the APC leadership, CSU leadership, et cetera. Is it worthy to get together once a month just to see how the furloughing is going? Are there issues that are coming up that we can work out? Or should we leave that out? See, there's some issues... This is very unfortunate for all. Thank you for that question.
No, it's more of just a comment. You know, our unit is one of the most critical students on our faculty. And a lot of the issues facing students in higher education relate to their health. And it's something that I think is going to warrant us to see a lot more of, mental health issues with our students, especially since there will be less people around to support them in more hours and less personal time to give our students that attention that they need. So I would just... I don't want to put it out like something that's going to happen, but I think it will be really important for us to be proud of our students approaching us and if there's a gut check going on, we can actually say something and not keep it in because we don't want to have what happened. Has happened in other cases happening here because we'll probably get to see a lot more of that. Those mental health issues are not for students. And if we work with them closely and just see them more and more often than others on campus, I think that would be something that would really be common enough if people were...
It's a good point. Thank you. Any other questions that I can try and offer? Kevin?
I just had a comment about the communication part with the students. I know from working many years at Move-In Weekend that especially the freshman parents tend to be the most needy as parents when they get here. And it may be worth speaking to housing as part of the move-in package that maybe some Q and A information about our situation be added to that so that as the student moves in and as the parents look over that information to help their student, especially the freshmen assimilate to the new college, that they do have some of this information, that they can... They have an immediate understanding of the situation, and it's not a shock to them when some of these issues start occurring because they tend to be... When they come and drop those students off for that, leaving home for the first time, they're very emotional, they're very... You know, they need as much information as they can get in that situation.
It's a good point, Kevin. I believe Chuck Rose, maybe Sidney Morgan, I'm not sure. I know years ago, Chuck has several sessions with parents. We do talks, and we can ask Chuck if he could make that comment because it's a very stressful time for parents. The first-time question here, the transition to college life is not easy. Thank you.
I just noticed those on the execution that it mentioned about social security contribution affected. What other tax or normal deductions are being affected by kind of overdue salary or forgiven months?
I think I'm going to have some of these answers, but I might look to Susan to help me. I think that the amount of money that you pay to the franchise tax board in the IRS will be correspondingly decreased because you will not have earned that money.
That's correct.
I think your FERS contribution might go down, but that will not affect your FERS retirement and so forth.
No, most of the taxable issues are not a straight percentage. So, for example, federal and state are on a tax table. So based on whatever withholding you have, it'll adjust accordingly. But things that will be a static percentage are your social security, Medicare, CalPERS.
And that goes also to the community?
Correct. Right. Right. One percent if you're.
Yeah. The 403B will probably say the same, unless you elect to change it.
That's correct.
Or Anamor. That's a name that you, there's maximums that you're allowed to do on a 403B, but I think you can stay wherever you want, as long as I don't go over your maximums. Yes.
Is there any kind of central theory counts or individual that people have ideas about saving money that might be, help us to get more money for spring? I know sometimes we've had those save the air days or high-power days where people turned down more lights and lights weren't just burning with nobody there actually reading anything under them. Will we be encouraged to or could you come up with ideas for the larger canvas or would that be all within our management unit or?
Yes.
Do we do need to encourage creativity and any ways to save?
We did a series of town halls in the spring that during at least one of those town halls, we generated a very large number of ideas. Some of them were found to be able to be implemented, others not. So now that everyone's coming back in session, I think it would be useful to try to do that. I suspect, I always like to encourage Dan and Susan on this question, because it's sort of the wizards of the town hall. As a CFO, I would very much welcome the opportunity to have the chance to speak to the campus community as a whole and really to see about the state of finances and that's a great way to generate ideas. So I think, I don't know if we planned our town hall series for the fall, but I know that they, most people tell me that they have been helpful, even though sometimes we don't answer everything or solve everything. The very fact that there's communication and it's open and straightforward and transparent also seems to be a good thing. So I would very much welcome that opportunity to do that. I know moving would as well. So yeah, I think we will try to figure out ways. Like the campus foyer for the summer came up actually for a short, so there was an idea to strongly advocate in ways to reduce utilities. There are some issues that pose in some of the branches, et cetera. It is something that needs to be considered from now, but yeah, I think that would be good.
And then you raised a good point I hadn't thought of. Maybe if the students, I mean, they go on, the lights burning in their room, maybe they would be less contentious if it's presented to them, help your university, maybe it would help them, give them greater understanding.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea. I'm cognizant of your time and I respect that because you maybe didn't have a chance to grab a sandwich. So I'm happy to talk as long as you would like with, are there any, now I should say, Joy, Susan, Kathleen, they are the experts and please don't hesitate to contact them because of the fact that they are also furloughed. But they may not be here during your call, but between the three of them, I think they will be able to be helpful. If there is a specific question, that applies to both the management group and the non-management group because there are, there are things that come up and there will be questions and that's natural and normal. We might not always know exactly the answer, but these folks are very, very skilled at finding that information. So I would strongly encourage you to keep that communication line going. And other than that, thank you so very much.
Larry, can I just make one comment? You know, I would ask everyone to, unlike the vacation, the way I understood the issue is it wasn't a vacation day that was going to be taken away, it was going to be substituted with a furlough day. Because operationally, sometimes you're going to need to be asked to do those things. So the appropriate administrator is going to work with the employee as much as they can. We'd ask that it goes both ways.
There may be consideration for folks to have rollover limits, vacation.
Yeah, for management, you're allowed to roll. I'm told for non-management, you're not allowed to roll and I don't quite know what that is, but I think that must be something that was agreed to in the agreements. So for the management, we have a policy that there's a certain number of year off preparing and it's always been a tradition for a variety of reasons. Dan sent a note somewhere around, I forget, around holidays saying, "We see four are going to be over." And then I write a note saying, "Do something." And then maybe you write back and say they can't and we, well, we usually put on three to four, five months. But I don't have that ability. Dr. Mariano does not have that ability for the non-represented folks to, that's my knowledge.
Is that a union issue or is that a student policy?
It's a contractual issue. It's in the, it's in certain contracts, so.
Leona Mayno?
As I understand, we all have maximums, vacation hours, everything is critical and should we reach our maximum, we get a notice that we are to take those hours, we would be open by December 31st and employees are encouraged then to submit time. If they, for operational need, they cannot take that time, that payroll is notified that those hours will roll over, but must be taken on February 31st.
Each contract is different, so I wouldn't want to say that that applies to APC. I would have to, I'd want to look at the specific contract language. It's something that we could add to the FAQs by unit, you know, what the articles are that refer to the, how much you can or the process in which you can carry over vacation. So we can address that. We'll put that into our FAQs. We are updating them as we, you know, get questions and answers and then Susan will send out, Susan Kasek sends out kind of the link to remind people where it's at and you can go look at the updated ones. We put a new date so you kind of know, oh, there's something new in there. So we'll, we'll add those to the FAQs.
What's my other question?
It was just reminding me that I have a question about something similar with regards to the four days that they'd be taking for spring break and possibly we can use our personal holiday for that fifth day. Is our personal holiday, is that given to us on a fiscal year basis or a calendar year? Okay, so the personal holiday we have right now that we would normally use for the day of Thanksgiving is not that, we cannot use that day.
No.
It would be the one that we would give next year. So we do still need to use this personal holiday.
That's right.
It's traditionally for Thanksgiving, except timing for the end of this.
And you could use your personal holiday on a furlough week.
Like day, like the Wednesday. So you could use yourself a little longer. You could almost go.
We can use it anytime we want to take a day off.
Right, right.
It's just, you know, it has to be used in the eight-hour period, right? That cannot, that's not a day that can be.
Right, right.
It was my initial hope that we could convince the CSU to take the one from 2009 and move it to 10, then we have one in 10, then still have the personal day to succeed next year. So you need to do that. Make sure you do it before 12:31, right? So you get rid of that personal holiday or something, you lose it.
Yes, you do.
Thank you again so much. We'll see you all soon.